County Council meeting is now in session. If you'd join me in invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our Heavenly Father, guide this council and each member while we serve the citizens of York County in providing protection, infrastructure, and proper guidance for our county's growth. We also ask during this difficult time for our fellow citizens in the coastal regions of Texas and the Houston area, for you to be, for you to provide them a path for a quick resolution of their hardships and give them the comfort they need as they overcome their many challenges. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, so now I'm gonna call your name if you'd come forward so Mr. Kendry can swear you into the Board or Commission. And I'm gonna mutilate your name, forgive me. But is it Genevieve Pelites?
Pelites.
Pelites, sorry. Peter McVeigh, Jane Scarborough, Jessica Smith, Mary Jo Soul, Ryan Blank, Teresa Bass, Blanche Bryant, Mark Kramer.
Come on, we won't hurt you, come on, we.
Let us up closer to it.
George is not coming in.
Do you need to raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office which I have been appointed and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Good, good.
I love you.
How are you?
Good, Alex.
Nice to see you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all, good to see you again.
Thanks for everything.
You're better than watch, I'm sure.
That's a hard act to follow.
That's right.
How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Michael, how are you?
Good to see you.
And your name got back off.
Good to see you.
Yes, sir.
Ryan Blank, how are you?
How are you?
What are you on, Floyd Green?
I appreciate your service and putting up with Bruce, too.
Thank you.
Appreciate the service.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the service.
Hey, Ron.
Okay, the next item is a public forum where you have two minutes to speak on an
item of your choice, if you remember signing up when you came in. Now, a lot of these are gonna be under public hearing, so at public hearing, you can speak as long as you want, so I'm assuming that's why you signed up, because you wanted to speak about that. So if we're, if it's in a public hearing, I'm not gonna call your name out right now and just wait until we get to that.
Correct.
But if I'm not sure, I'm gonna call your name out, and if you say, 'cause some of these, I don't think are a public hearing, but I wasn't sure. But the first one I come to that I'm not sure about is, and I can't read the last name, but the first name is Anthony?
Citro.
Citro?
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, okay. And then, is that Sal? Okay. Herbert and Jean, well, let's see, no, that's public hearing, that's public hearing. Let's see, is this Diego?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, sir. Was that a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, well, when we get to that one, you can spend, have plenty of time to speak. In fact, that's it then, so everybody's here for the public hearings. And I do wanna remind the council that we have about ten public hearings today, so let's do everything we can to be concise and to the point, and we might get out before midnight. But do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda with two adjustments. Move item number seventeen to the next meeting and correct a Scribner's error on item number seven. It should read third reading instead of second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. And bear with me while I flip pages for just a second here. Okay, public hearings. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad lorum taxes, an incentive agreement to provide for a fee in lieu of ad lorum tax incentive to a company known as Ultra Additives LLC formerly identified as Project Four Leaf, the inclusion of certain property in York County, South Carolina, and other minors related thereto. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Yes, sir. Welcome. Be sure to give your name and address.
Luke Boulding. My mailing address is 975 Ultra Avenue, Clover, South Carolina, 29710. Mister Chairman and other members of the council, my name is stated. I'm a plant manager of the Munzing and North American LP operating a chemical manufacturing facility owned by its affiliates, Ultra Additives LLC at 975 Ultra Avenue in Clover. Ultra Avenue, Ultra Additives LLC plans to undertake a second major expansion of its facilities in Clover with the first completed over ten years ago, provided that you approved the fee agreement to make the proposed expansion financially feasible. Ultra Additives LLC will commit to spend $6,951,000 in the second expansion on new equipment and construction of a warehouse. The new warehouse will make it possible to transfer current warehousing in North Carolina to our Clover site. Also, in connection with that new warehouse, Ultra Additives LLC recently petitioned the town of Clover for annexation of three of its adjoining parcels containing in the aggregate two and one-half acres more or less. So you can see that this proposed expansion will also benefit the town of Clover beyond just the addition of the new equipment in its present facility within the town limits. We do appreciate your consideration to make this suspension possible for us, and we look forward to continuation of a good and mutual beneficial relationship between us and the citizens of York County. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the jobs you bring to York County.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion to close?
Move to close.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and Kingsley Number Seven LLC to provide for a fee in lieu of taxes, to provide for certain special source revenue credits in connection therewith, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other minors related thereto. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Yes, yes, sir. Just be sure to give your name and address.
Name is Paul Devine. Address is 4840 Drakestone Court, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28226. I'm here on behalf of the ownership of Kingsley Seven. Before I speak, just wanna thank you all for your service to the community and the area and your thoughtfulness when it comes to jobs.
Thank you, sir.
Kingsley Seven represents, in looking at the calendar, over a twenty-year partnership at Kingsley in creating jobs with York County and the state of South Carolina, the town of Fort Mill. Again, I represent the ownership of that entity, Childers Klein Properties and the Springs Company. This building and this project, and I thank you all for your consideration, will allow us to put on the ground in York County for the first time in almost a decade, a new corporate office building that will have speculative space, that will allow us to attract those jobs to the area and allow companies in the area to continue to. So we really do appreciate the, not just your partnership on this particular endeavor, but a, again, a several decades history with us in working to attract and create investment in the area so that we can grow those great jobs right here in York County. And with that, I'll leave you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Don't hold pause, that is my iPad, Christie's right, it does happen every time. But don't hold his Charlotte address against him either, he's got a very fine sister that lives here in York County and has her for years and years and years.
That's right, and grew up in Sumter, so not too far away. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anybody else for wants to speak? Anybody against? Have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, hold a public hearing and consider second reading case number seventeen nineteen to rezon from RC one to RC two at sixteen oh six Tide Wood Lane in the York Community. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
My name is Barbara LaPolee. I'm the manager at Clayton Homes in Rock Hill, 1044 North Anderson Road. This piece of property is on the borderline of RC one and RC two zoning. It has quite a bit of manufactured housing in it, and our young customers proceeded to get a septic permit, got their financing approved, and ordered a home, and then realized that it was the wrong zoning. So the map, I have a map that I could distribute. There have even manufactured homes in the RC one portion, so it's not really much of a hardship to make it RC two.
If you want us to see the maps, you can hand them to Mr. Kendry.
Sure, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that'll make it easier for everybody to understand. So it's progressed to the point where there's been quite a bit of time invested on some customers, and we wanna do what we can for them. Of course, providing them a home, but also moving this forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Barney Lundey, and I oppose for this rezoning. I have three parcels of property on Tide Wood Lane. I live at 1664 Tide Wood Lane, and it affects my property to agree with this, and I have to say no. I ask to consider no on this, because when this property got zoned back twenty, twenty-five years ago, it affected me where I used to have two residents, well, when I bought the property, you could have two residents per tract on my five-acre tract, but when it got rezoned or zoned, I lost that. And also, you couldn't have a mobile home, it'd have to be a house. And so what's there has been there all these years, and I don't deny there's mobile homes or modular homes there on the properties, but for going forward, just protecting my interests on my property, I like to ask for no on that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else against? Have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, hold a public hearing and consider second reading case number seventeen twenty to rezon from AGC to RUD at 3001 South Param Road in the York Community. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? In favor, yes, sir.
My name's Ed Hendrickson. My address, 3001 South Param Road, I'm the owner. We're just trying to rezone it to refinance it, because there is a, our house and then a single-wide trail on it. To refinance it, the banks, either we gotta remove it or rezone the property to get it the single-wide on its own parcel. So that's why we're trying to do it, to refinance it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody helps, anybody else in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, hold a public hearing and consider second reading case number seventeen twenty-one to rezon from RC two to UD to BD three at thirty-two twelve Mount Gallant and eighteen-thirty-five Frank Barnett Roads in the Rock Hill Community. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion.
Somebody just stuck their head in.
Up, up, yep.
He's moving a little slow, so he's on the way.
Yes, sir. Did you wanna speak?
No, I don't think so. I wanna know the outcome of that.
Okay, you're about, just stand right there, you're about ready to find out. So we had a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Can I have a motion of support?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. It passed. Yes, sir.
Councilman Blackwell, I'm gonna recuse myself from the next hearing.
Okay, number six. You know about number six?
Yep.
Okay. Hold public hearing and consider second reading case number seventeen twenty-two, rezon from BD one to BD three at the 102 Weatherwood Street in the Rock Hill Community. Anybody here wanna speak in favor? Yes. Whoop, whoop. In favor? In favor?
Y'all are together, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. We're Jennifer and Brent Childers, address 1411 Lands End Road. The property in question is 102 Weatherwood Street, and we're, we applied to rezon from BD one to BD three. I think y'all are pretty familiar with this case. We were able to talk to some of the neighbors in the area. They do have some concerns, which we talked to them about. One is, one of their biggest concerns is that if we were to sell the property in the future and it's zoned BD three, what could come to the area once we sell? BD three is intended for more intense commercial purposes, which we don't really believe are, used to be more intense commercial. Of course, it is the only one that allows overnight dog boarding, which is the reason for our application. The other, now, to speak to that, there is the property right next door to ours that is zoned BD three already. So unfortunately, although we do plan to be there for twenty-plus years, the owner of the property next door could essentially change his mind, open another business, or sell it to somebody who could open something more intense. And we would do everything we could to prohibit that, of course, but another concern that the residents had were the noise, 'cause this is a dog facility. Although the dogs would be boarded indoors every night, they would use the yard for exercise and bathroom breaks, so there would be dogs outside, and we understand that dogs bark. We can't stop a dog from barking, but we can stop a dog from barking outside excessively. We, all of our staff would be supervised any dogs outside, and we could take them inside if it became an issue. Some of the, also to speak to that, what we did was talk to some neighbors of other local facilities, that was a handout that we just passed around. There are, we interviewed neighbors of four facilities in Rock Hill and Fort Mill, three in Rock Hill, one in Fort Mill, and we tried to put it in an easy way, since this is the first time you're seeing this information, but there were neighbors that we spoke to all within five hundred feet of these like facilities, and the comments that they made to us were on the far right of that handout there, most of which you'll see reported no to very little noise around this facility. Of course, you know, we're not naive, again, we know dogs bark, but we feel like it can be handled in a professional manner, and do want to bring up that the closest property that's like this facility is the third one on the list, Wagon Tales Pet Inn and Salon. That was just applied for rezoning two years ago and passed by council. I don't believe there was any opposition by the neighbors, but it is residential on the back side and across the street, so we feel like it is fairly comparable to this property. And the only other thing is, the property is already zoned commercial BD one. We talked to some of the neighbors about what could come of that. One example that we used was, we plan to keep the structure, it's a formal residential home, we plan to keep it, it's a really cute property, we plan to keep that, keep all the trees, improve it so that it looks nicer from the street, put in a fence, extra trees. Somebody within BD one could come in and clear-cut that lot, pave it, and put in a convenience store, and that's not what we want for that neighborhood or for our business. We hope to, even if our rezoning isn't approved, we are considering moving forward, purchasing the property, and going through with the grooming business, which is allowed in the current BD one. That being said, we want to have a good relationship with our neighbors, we fully respect them and their property. We don't want this to become a high-use commercial district. So I think that's really all I have to say. You have anything to add? Thanks for your time. We know we've sent several emails and lots of information, so we appreciate all your time and consideration.
Thank you, thank you, both. Anybody else wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed? I'll start with the front row first. Yes, ma'am. And just remember to give your name and address.
Good evening, council. My name's Brenda Carpenter, and I reside at 4671 West Wind Drive in the Windwood subdivision Rock Hill. I wish to voice my opposition to the proposed rezoning of 102 Weatherwood Street, also in the Windwood subdivision to a BD three. The applicant's planned business of a doggy daycare and boarding facility will create a noise nuisance which they readily admitted would bother the neighborhood when they brought the request before the planning commission. As it is, we have a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and we'd like for it to remain so. A petition was given to council at last meeting that represented thirty-four households, all of which opposed the rezoning. Only one household contacted had no problem with the rezoning. What concerns me even more, if this business were to fail, that the property would still have a BD three zoning, and who knows what could go there next. I respectfully request that you consider how you would feel if this were proposed for your neighborhood, and more specifically, in your backyard. A BD three zoning can do in no way improve or maintain the quality of life for the residents of our community, and will certainly not help in retaining the value that we have in our homes and property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person that wants to speak against?
Hi.
Hey, yes, ma'am.
I'm Pamela Harcher, and I reside at 4681 West Wind Drive.
You said Harper?
Harker, H-A-R-K-E-R. I am opposing the proposed rezoning change for 102 Weatherwood from BD one to BD three. 102 Weatherwood is in the Windwood subdivision, and no positive benefits will derive from a rezoning to BD three in an area of stability. I have heard at council meetings how BD three aren't a good fit for the neighborhood, and that's so true. BD threes come with their own host of problems for people in the neighborhoods. BD threes open the door for many unsuitables that must be lived with every day, twenty-four hours a day. You can never get away from it unless you get outside your home. The growth and the management goals for York County provides a way for growth that improves the quality of life for the county and provides for balance of growth. The York County Vision Statement says that York County provides an environment where all citizens and businesses can thrive. 102 Weatherwood's on BD one falls within the growth management goals and the York County Vision Statement, and it is in the best interest for the neighborhood to retain the BD zoning. We do not oppose growth, but we do oppose growth that is not suitable for the health and the development of the community which it's going to be in. If it's passed, it has the potential for so many adverse impacts on so many people that it is in the best interest that the property remain BD one. Please make your decisions on the best interest of many and not for the interest of one. No situation is so bad that a barking dog will not make worse. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed?
Move to close.
Okay, got a motion to close? We have a second. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Make a motion to deny.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Okay, next item. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider an application for a public service used to construct a county-owned booster pump and water storage tank on tax map numbers seven-eight-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero-five-two and one-oh-one in the Newport community. I believe Audra wanted us to allow the engineer to speak first? Yes, sir. This is speaking for.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Blackwell, council members.
My name is Keith Costley. I work with Kekin Wood Engineering. We do business out of 215 Hampton Street in Rock Hill. So we're here representing the county regarding a project that's of significant importance to the county's western water system. It is a new potable water pump station and ground storage tank. It is located essentially, you know, on the frontage of 161 for the Carter Lumber existing commercial business, and it is bounded immediately by Carter Lumber on three sides and the Norfolk Southern Railroad on one side. So the county went through a significant process of identifying sites, ultimately selected this site, and I'll be happy to answer any specific questions about the pump station if something comes up.
Okay, since this is the engineer, I'll allow anybody that's got a question, but I don't think anybody does. Thank you, sir. Anybody else speaking in favor? Anybody opposed? Got a motion?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Cox.
I just wanna make sure that this is all from enterprise funds. Is that what we're funding this with?
All right. Any other questions? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, council to hold a public hearing and consider an application for a public service used to construct a county-owned water storage tank on tax map number seven-two-one-zero-zero-zero-zero-six-nine in the Fort Mill community. Anybody wanna speak in favor?
Didn't even know he wanted to speak. Okay, this is for the storage tank. I am Matt C. Smith with Kimley Horn out of our Charlotte office, which is 200 South Tryon, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28202. Let me. We would like to request approval for a public use of this particular property. This property is located between Baxter Lane and Central Carolinas off of US 21. The county has a need for elevated storage in the eastern portion of their distribution site. This need has been documented in several. Um, this need has been documented in several reports, but they need that to be able to meet current and future water demands, um, to maintain system pressure and to provide, um, adequate fire flow, um, conditions. This particular site is very well suited because it meets the hydraulic needs of the distribution system based on its proximity to the 24-inch water line, which runs along US 21. And it is also currently undeveloped and the particular geometry of this site, um, doesn't lend itself to too many development options. So an elevated storage tank is one of the options that would actually fit on this site. So the particular view that we have there shows the site and where the access and the elevated storage tank would ultimately be located.
Being, once again, I'll allow a question if there being none, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else in favor that wants to speak? Anybody opposed? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Erin Chantrey. My address is 9200 Doe Court, Charlotte, North Carolina. Please don't hold my Charlotte address against me either. Um, my, uh, grandparents, uh, lived for many decades on a parcel, two parcels down from this proposed tower. Um, they passed away and we don't use that land right now, but it is the majority of what my parents have left for their retirement. And, um, we're very concerned that a water tower adjacent to it will really restrict its development potential. Um, and so we're very much opposed to it in its location. Taking off my personal hat and putting on my planner hat, I'm a, um, urban planner by profession. Um, and I'm quite concerned about its location and proximity to housing. Um, it's not quite undeveloped. There is a pocket of residential housing directly adjacent to it, um, of residents who have lived there for a very, very long time and are a family that took care of my grandparents. Um, and it's hard for me to, of course, not being knowledgeable of the search process of, of finding a parcel, but as a planner, it's hard for me to think that there wouldn't be a better suited area that's not adjacent to existing residential. Um, and even areas closer to the interstate adjacent to existing industrial, I think, would be much more appropriate. Also, I question the access, um, of the tower to Baxter Lane. Baxter Lane is a very quaint residential road. Um, and while, um, there won't be constant access, um, every day to the tower, I, I question why it doesn't instead connect to Central Carolinas Parkway, which is much more suitable for any, um, non-residential traffic. So, um, those are my personal and professional, um, opinions on this and, um, please take them into account in making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else against? Yes, sir.
My name is, uh, Tony Citro and we live at, uh, Baxter's dad's land. We lived there on, uh, just, uh, 21. We are on a butter. Uh, the only question I had about the property of the tower was basically the aesthetics of the appearance. Have to agree with the engineer, there's not much can be done with that, uh, piece of property. It's probably the best use for the property. Uh, my concern is, I believe the tower's going to be, uh, 180 feet and my concern is, um, is it going to be left as a concrete tower? Is it going to be painted? What's the aesthetic effect on the property? Other than that, uh, I don't, we're generally not opposed to it. Uh, like I said, it's, uh, it benefits everybody in the area, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Reverend Polly Buchanan, live 256 Baxter Lane. And this is my wife Esther. We own, uh, our family owns adjacent property. I represent the eight families that live on Baxter Lane. Uh, the berm that they're building that on is unstable. I was there when they piled the dirt up. Uh, I also told a company, Dress for Less, that they were building, they're building on a, uh, pond that was back there. They didn't listen and it fell. Uh, the water tower is adjacent to my daughter's house. Uh, will the road be from Baxter Lane, which is a unimproved dirt road, which is, uh, it's hard to get serviced, to get the road scraped and the grass cut? We have to call. Uh, will it be coming in off the Carolinas? There's also a piece of property, if, uh, there's a service road that runs Carolinas all the way down to the interstate where the, the new water line was put in about five years ago that runs, uh, adjacent to the creek. Uh, we feel like that would be a better served property. It was down closer to the interstate where it would not involve any residential. It would be all commercial. Uh, it would be at the very end of Ross's, uh, second warehouse down there. Uh, there's a, already a maintenance road that feeds that area and it would be out of the residential area. I've got a couple of notes. Uh, where will the service road be? Uh, what could be, could it be put closer to 77? How much noise will this pump generate? Cause my daughter's house is right next door. We're already hearing the noise from Ross's trucking that goes 24/7. Uh, will this be another noise problem that we have? Uh, I'll be, if it's 180 foot tall on that thing, the first time it springs a leak, it will flood my daughter's house. If you'll know the ge- geographic location, the berm was supposed to be put there temporarily. Uh, it has not been maintained by the company that owns that property, which is Ross Dress for Less. The engineers that put it up there was going to remove the berm and they found out they put it on our property. Uh, so this, we have a big erosion problem on top of that berm. If the York County would like to maintain that property and maintain the erosion problem we're having. Uh, the Kudzu is hiding most of the erosion, but it does not slow down the erosion. We feel like this would be best served. I understand this was not the first choice, uh, for a water tower location in our area. The first choice was on Flint Hill Road. Why did it get turned down and why is our location a better location than Flint Hill Road near the Flint Hill Baptist Church? I would like for you to consider these, uh, questions, consider the alternatives. I know that in the industrial area we live in around us, that they do need a water tower. We're not against the water tower, we're against the location. I believe it would be best served to the community and to the property owners if it was closer to the interstate down on the rest of the property that y'all are talking about. Thank you for listening and appreciate y'all's work.
Appreciate it. Anybody else opposed? Do you have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, do we have a new motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve so we can, I, I'd like to discuss this.
Okay. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
All right, discussion. Mr. Johnson.
Can staff address some of what's been raised and kind of the questions so that, I mean, I'm sitting here hearing things kind of for the first time on this and I'd like staff to kind of give us feedback and kind of a response, if at all possible.
Do you want to address the, the question about cement or whatever and how it's going to look and that kind of?
Right, I'll do my best to address the questions that came up. Um, one of the, uh, one of the questions, one of the first ones I heard was, why would the access be from Baxter and not from Central Carolina? Um, the reason for that is the topography of the site. It's actually very steep going down because of the berm that they talked about to Central Carolina. So it'd be very difficult to put in an access drive from, from Central Carolina that comes up to where the tank site is. Um, one of the other questions was the aesthetics of the tank. The, um, this particular type of tank is a composite tank is, which is what is planned and it has a, uh, concrete pillar on the bottom and then it has a steel, um, portion that holds the water. So there's not a lot of different legs and cables that need required maintenance and, uh, and repainting. So the, the painting is one solid surface up at the top. So they, aesthetically, these tanks generally do better than most elevated storage tanks. Um, there was a question about the site being suitable to build an elevated storage tank on. We have done geotechnical soundings of that and it is true that there is a lot of fill in that area, but the foundation for the tank will start, uh, way lower than the fill. And so the, the geotechnical report already tells us what we need to know in order to make a stable foundation for that particular site. Um, one of the questions was about the noise of this particular facility. Um, elevated storage tanks generally are very good neighbors. They, this does not have any pumps associated with it. So it's filled from the pressure of the distribution system, which ultimately comes from a pump station that's very far away from this site. So little or no noise and then access, we do show access from Baxter, but it wouldn't even be daily access. So the county would have ability to access and maintain the site, but generally there's not a lot of traffic in and out of an elevated storage tank site. It communicates remotely back with the, um, with the SCADA system for the, for the county. Um, those were the questions that I remembered coming up. I'm happy to try and, uh, answer any other questions if I missed any.
There was two more, I guess, that I heard. One was the, and I didn't know if there's, this, the one that was, there's a proposal at Flint Hill for a, for a water tower. I only, I've never heard of that and whether that's, I don't know if that's true or not. And the other one was moving it to a site, but, but I think he said down and I think that explains the definition of why it couldn't go there, cause it's lower. But, uh, but where the existing water line was the other two questions that I heard.
Okay, so the height of the tank is dictated by the pressure that's in the system. We have to match that to the system. So yes, if we have a, if we have a lower site, then we ultimately have to build a higher, more expensive tank. The proximity, the other issue to make this, uh, hydraulically feasible, the proximity of the tank site to the main arterial in the distribution system, which is that 24-inch water main that currently runs, uh, right along US 21. So that proximity is important too. So if we move further away, um, it becomes much more difficult to make a suitable tank location.
And you may not be familiar with it, but I'm trying to get a picture of what you were talking about, the tower or the tank. Cause you know, the old tanks, like you say, were on legs with a big ball on top of them.
That's correct.
I imagine you're talking more about like the type, the tank that's over at, um, Old Point Elementary School that looks kind of like a silo almost? It's more of a solid looking?
Yeah, they kind of look like a silo and then on the top they have a larger portion that's steel. Rock Hill is building one currently right now.
Yeah.
I guess I do have a couple of follow-up questions. I understand you, you just say on the access point that it would be difficult, but not impossible. Was there anything done to determine the cost between having the access point at the better road versus the, the non-residential road?
Um, well, we certainly looked at the feasibility of that and based on the setbacks that we're trying to maintain, it would, I don't want to say it's impossible. It would just been very challenging to build a driveway from, from that particular side.
What vehicles access it and how often?
Well, that might be a better question for, for actual county personnel, but light, light trucks. There's, uh, so whoever, whatever maintenance facility is coming in to, to maintain and check on the tank.
Yeah, it would basically be three-quarter ton pickups, hard point ton pickups.
How often? Is it, is that one that has to be checked daily or?
It'll be monitored by the SCADA system and then I'll, I would like to, you and me to go there occasionally just to visually put eyes on it.
Uh, David, what would be the result? What would happen to occur? What issues, problems it would occur if the council says no to this?
Well, first of all, we had to find another site. Uh, the site is, uh, I think you guys have been working on this for quite a while.
Quite a while.
We have, uh, extensive site identification process. Actually, uh, evaluate, I can't remember how many sites you evaluated. Five, six, seven sites. And I thought this was the top site that came back as a result of that study.
Well, it, it progressed over time with what was available and what other development and, I mean, so there, there were, there were several different sites evaluated and for some of the reasons that I already mentioned, that's why this one was ultimately selected.
So essentially you'd have to go back and maybe pick second best choice location?
Um, well, right, if we don't get this site, we'll have to have a, a different site and the other ones were all eliminated for one reason or another before we got to here, so.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of married to this site. We've already paid for some easement a long time to, uh, 21 and if you, if you recall the Ross site, uh, we have some inner workings with the Ross site right now with that site. So we're pretty much married to this site right now.
Questions? Anybody?
On the aesthetics, I mean, I've heard what the, what, what the proposed, um, tower is going to be made of, but what is going to be done to make it look aesthetically, um, not as, I don't even know that you could make it less obvious, but do you have in mind what that looks like?
Well, the, the actual tank is coded right now, it would match the other ones in, in York County system. So it would be tank white, which is a particular color, yeah. And there's, at this point, there's no proposed logo or there'd be no advertising or anything else. So it'd be a concrete pillar with a, with a tank white is the technical name of the color.
Like the one on Hackel?
Yes, sir.
So what were all of the, the site options? I mean, is that something, I mean, I guess at this point, I, I'm, I'm struggling, we're in discussion mode, so I'll go ahead and say my piece. Um, th- these were issues like, uh, Councilman Johnson said, that wasn't aware of until we had the meeting tonight. Didn't know that this might, that this would be a controversial issue. So at this point, I guess my feeling would be that I would prefer to defer it to make sure that, I mean, this is a big issue and it affects the folks that live there and I think that we ought to at least make sure that, I would like to get comfortable with, with, that there's no other option for us.
I have a question.
Yes.
I know when, when, um, companies are putting in a, um, cell tower, they have a, I don't know, is it called a fall, fall zone or something? Do tanks like this have, is there anything like that that is considered for that?
There's no required fall zone, um, for the particular tank.
And this may not be a question for you. From a standpoint of Baxter Lane, Baxter Lane's a private road from what I understand. Is it, no, it's a county road. It's gravel county road. Um, what is the county, what is the plan? Are you going to bring, I imagine, what's that roll in? How many parts? I mean, do you, did the cement tower kind of pre-made and you just put it up and basically put something on top of it? Or are you pulling it on?
No, it's, it's cast in place. So during construction, there would be elevated traffic to the site and a lot of that would be concrete trucks that would come in to bring the, bring the concrete to a pumper truck, which then pumps it up into the different, into the column, basically. So the, so there definitely would be access and construction vehicles, um, during, during the construction period. And then after that, the ultimate use of the tank would be very limited access.
Is there a plan for repairing the road when we're done? So there's money in the budget already set aside. We're going to make, we're going to re-gravel.
Yep.
Fix the road.
Calcium chloride, we're going to fix this road, at least get it back to a serviceable level.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any problem with the motion to def- I, I mean, I think, I think, um, I was a little surprised just, just kind of hearing the people come forward tonight. So I'm going to withdraw my motion, uh, to approve so that Ms. Cox could make her motion to defer.
Go ahead, Kristy.
I make the motion to defer. Second.
Discussion, any further discussion?
I just want to make sure, I doubt that causes staff any problems, just want to verify that. It doesn't, doesn't, um, doesn't.
No, we, we, we're, uh, we're getting close to bidding this out.
Okay. But I mean, something, that's what my understanding is, we want to get, get these questions, make sure, feel comfortable with them for next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So two weeks isn't an issue?
No.
Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Um, next item, council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and FOMAS Incorporated, a company previously identified as Project Ring, acting for itself and/or one or more affiliates or other project sponsors pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad lorm taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county and other matters related thereto. Anybody here want to speak in favor? In favor?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name is Diego Bonardi and I live in, uh, Simsville, 300 South Street. And, uh, I'm the managing director of FOMAS Incorporated. Uh, FOMAS Incorporated historically called like Ajax and is a, an historical plant in York, South Carolina, like many of the folks know. So we actually have 150 employees and, uh, my job is to present a plan of 2.5 million over the next five years. Uh, the reason why, uh, of this plan is, uh, to innovate certain machinery and, uh, to adapt our The reason why of this plan is to innovate certain machinery and to adapt our market, our type of machinery to the market that is keep changing. So, is a need for our company to grow, to make more product in-house. And along with that, with new machinery, so we plan to hire some new employees over the next five years. So, the plan is pretty much established. He has, is very detailed on what we plan to do over the next five years. The major investment will be over the next two years, so the big portion of investment will be right away. We really, for sure, appreciate all your help on the incentives agreement that you can provide us in order to make the transaction easier. If you have any other question, I want to thank you all for this.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move close.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
One quick thing, I'd just like to tell council members, if you've never been out there, I'm sure the gentleman would be more than happy to give a tour. I did under the previous ownership, and it's an amazing facility. The way they use presses and make those whole rolled rings. I mean, if you remember the movie Alien with Sigourney Weaver, there's a piece of equipment in there that reminds me of that movie, when you, the way they put the things in and out of the furnace. But it's amazing facility, and they doing a lot of good work here, so.
It's a pretty much, it's a pretty unique process. There's four different plants in the US, so, and a range of 15,000 or 5,000 plant like that, so, it would be what many times.
And I had a mental moment. Did we vote, or were you, that's a discussion? Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item, the staff would like us to have a motion to defer this at the company's request, number 10.
For the public hearing?
Yeah.
I should not make that motion.
David, I heard that correctly, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item. All business, staff to provide an update on the Fort Mill Convenience Center. Yes, sir, Eric.
Hello, council. Just going to give a quick, brief update on where we are since the closure of our permanent site that was located on 160 East. Basically, what we've done to date and what the project schedule is moving forward. As you know, it closed in July, well, we got notice of our lease termination in July of 2016. We were able to keep the site open until March of 2017, where we then opened a temporary site, which has limited services, but it is serving the public as it is now. Like I said, on a limited basis, but it is providing a service. So, in the meantime, we were looking for a permanent solution. That was probably the most lengthy process in trying to find suitable solution in the Fort Mill area. We were able to identify a property, as you know, on the corner of West Hensley and the Fort Mill Parkway. There were some lengthy negotiations with that that went all the way until we closed on the property on April 7th, 2017. During that time, though, there was negotiations, there was surveys being done, and phase-one site assessments being done during that time. Since the closure of the property, we've met with, and we've had a pre-submital meeting about our potential plans, meeting with planning and SCDOT. We've done a traffic impact analysis of the site, and we've also done a hazardous material assessment of the site, because there's two existing structures that will have to be demoed. So, we received those reports. Just recently, we put an RFQ out for the design engineer, and as a matter of fact, coincidentally, you approved that this evening. So, we are going to go back to our design engineer, get that process rolling, and we've got a pretty aggressive schedule for completion of this project, which we anticipate by July 1, 2018. What that will involve is a public use request, advertising for construction, and then actually receiving bids, and then construction of the site. Trying to prevent this from happening in the future, where the future with other sites, currently, we have two other leased sites. As you know, that's what happened in this case, we had a lease that expired. The owner did not renegotiate that, it went to another use. So, we also have the McConnell's site, which is on a lease until 2020. We have been talking to that owner now about purchase of that property when that time comes. Also, the Baxter site is a lease that expires in 2019. Coincidentally, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Clear Springs to discuss that as well. And then, some other additional considerations, we have a need, and we're evaluating that in the Fort Mill area and in the Lake Wiley area for additional centers. But I will entertain any questions if you have about that.
Questions for Eric?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Cox?
We're providing a response. I think what we last communicated to the public and why this kind of came up was there was some concern that we had promised a date, or that the staff had promised a date that couldn't happen, and didn't have a plan for that and what the folks could expect. I know that you guys are working really hard. My concern is that the public doesn't know what's going on. So, I think what might be appropriate is if on this current site, the temporary site, since this is going a year beyond what we promised to them before, what would happen, and that nobody here is going to throw rocks, we just need to get it done as soon as we can get it done, is to have some sort of billboard that's big enough to inform the public of the timeline, so that we can make sure that we're holding folks accountable, and so they know what's coming down the pike, and so that I don't get 4 million emails asking the same question and asking why it didn't happen the way I had communicated it would happen to them, because that's what was communicated to me. I think it makes, it makes us all look like we don't know what we're doing, or makes us all look bad if we're, at least don't know what the plan is. So, I would ask for that, and I appreciate you sharing that, because my concern was that there were other parcels in the community that we were still having this concern with. It sounds like you've got a handle on that, but I would really like to hear back from you. Do you think that's a possibility?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can do that. That's no problem. That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Eric? There being none? Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Next item, council to consider second reading authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between a company known for the time being as Project B5 in York County, whereby York County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the company and providing for payment by the company of certain fees in lieu of ad lorm taxes, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other matters related thereto.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm accusing myself of cause B5, that's my wife's employer.
Okay, did you get that?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Robert, you can come back now. Next item, council to entertain a motion for reconsideration regarding the hospitality tax marketing grant funding approved on August 21st for Main Streets of Old Town Association, Christmasville, Rock Hill, 2018, and place the item on the September 18th, 2017 county council agenda for consideration.
Make a motion that we place the funding of Christmasville on the next agenda, since it was, my understanding and oversight, that we did not cut them when we cut the other festivals.
So, when you say funding, you mean to consider discussion of the funding?
Yeah, put it back on for discussion.
Discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'd like to reconsider the whole motion. I guess that was, I've gotten some email, I'd forgotten that we had deferred it and put Summerfest in the situation that we did by deferring it the month before and giving them their answer on January, I mean, two days before. And also, wasn't prepared to, we basically made decisions on individual items. I had a summary, I was prepared to endorse the H-Tax recommendations, but not to make decisions on individual items. I would like to see us put the whole matter up for reconsideration instead of just a part of it.
Anybody else feel that way?
I'll make the comment that since Councilmember Williams brought it up, the timing could have been better for Summerfest, but I still believe that the reasons that, for cutting and the reasons that we made the decision we did were correct, and I still stand with those decisions.
Miss what? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I must have heard you.
Yeah, I guess that reminded me somebody. It wasn't just the Summerfest that I was talking about, I heard some comments that well, if we cut their funding, we should cut somebody else's funding. And it wasn't just Summerfest, so that was another, another item in there. Like I said, without having the paperwork to do it and make that decision, do it. And another thing that was said is, a part of it was that if, that we're trying to not fund long-term projects, and I really feel that, I don't think this council's ever actually had that discussion. I feel that long-term, as long as long-term projects generate H-Tax, then that's fine. The reason I wasn't more vocal last time is because I felt like a lot of the projects that we were talking about not funding were not only long-term, but I don't know how much H-Tax they were generating as well with, so I don't want to, I guess, want to set the tone of our future, just because I'm careful that we've said in the president says, if you're long-term, you don't want to fund. We certainly don't need to fund stuff that's self-sustaining and making money, if that's another thing that we need to put in there. But especially if you can show you generate more H-Tax than you, than you, than you asked for, which is, I've never seen a project that actually does that, but if there is such a project, I would hate to not fund it just because it was 30 years old.
And if I could, sir, I'd like to ask maybe Kevin to chime in on that, because my understanding is every one of these festivals, pretty much, we're using unincorporated tax dollars to fund these festivals, and the incorporated municipalities are collecting the H-Tax for their budgets and their coffers. We're not collecting anything from these festivals, because they're, in yours' case, there's no restaurants in the unincorporated area, so the county doesn't collect from that. We're spending county money.
You want to comment, Kevin?
Sure. Robert's exactly right. Unincorporated restaurants around York don't generate any money. I don't think there are any, actually. You have to go out to the Sharon Grell, and we get 1% of that. A good illustration of what events inside the incorporated areas bring to the county would be the BMX event. Comparing restaurants of our restaurants, in the last two years, we actually slightly dipped in our H-Tax collection in the month of July. Factoring in all our restaurants, including the new ones, we were up, I think, less than 1%. Rock Hill themselves saw $5 million worth of boost in the restaurants, $100,000 increase in H-Tax. So, the proximity of where the event is being held directly drives where the H-Tax money's going to be driven. And I think, to your point, you made Chad, the events that are self-sustaining, I think that's part of the notion, why put more unincorporated H-Tax money into those if they're self-sustaining? And the events, and if events is generating positive H-Tax revenue, I'm all for supporting it. I don't know of one out there that does that, though.
And I guess that's why I wanted to make the comments and think a full discussion would warrant it, because those are stuff that I thought in my head, but probably should have said out loud. And I did fail to realize that we had deferred it one time and didn't realize the situation we're going to put Summerfest in. But if we are, if we do want to change some of these criteria, then we need to affect the application, I guess, is the, I mean, if we're not ready to do that, we're not ready to do that. But if we do this again next year, we, the H-Tax is judging one way, and we're judging them another, and I don't know how fair that is.
Ms. Cox?
I think it was a difficult decision that was made prior, too. I think it's a little bit, if we're going to open it up for reconsideration, it seems like the whole thing ought to be brought up for reconsideration. So, for that reason, I mean, I'm going to vote no to this.
Any other comments? I didn't hear any support for Chad's willingness to bring it forward, so I won't even offer that to you. So, I'm kind of with, I mean, I wasn't here, so I don't know if it's even right for me to have an opinion on this, but I'm not too fond of bringing stuff back, but that's just my two cents. Any other discussion? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Looks like I'm going to have to vote on this one. Well, if that's, I'll say aye, too, if that's what the people want to talk it over. So, can we have a hand count?
Well, you never did ask for it, didn't you?
Oh, I'm sorry, opposed, no?
No.
So, can we have a count, hand count for four?
Three to two.
Three to two? Four?
Four to two, if you voted in favor.
Okay.
We got, oh, yeah, that's right, Robert Kingdom.
Okay.
And Allison Kingdom.
New business, Trish, do you want to come forward?
Let the record reflect, Kristi and I voted the same way.
And make sure you make a point of that.
It was easy.
And this is Trish, startup public information officer, and she's going to have Trent Ferris with you, I think, maybe so. Okay, for public information officer at the sheriff's office, and Patrick Hamilton for Pennies for Progress project manager, to present to council the New York County website.
Great. Chairman and council, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you tonight to provide you an update on the three new websites for the county. I first and foremost want to say thank you to the staff of York County. They've worked hard on these websites. Each department and division edited each of their pages, updated, redesigned them, just refreshed them, all across the board with pictures and videos. And so, this was a large, if not the largest cross-departmental project, which involved over 100 employees coming together to make these three websites a success. So, I'm thankful for everybody that was involved. I want to specifically thank the IT department, their technical knowledge, their professionalism and understanding of modern and emerging technologies that really laid the foundation to build these three websites as well. They drove myself and staff to realize that these are more than just websites to push out information, but these can help our workflow processes to provide more efficient and effective customer service to the residents of York County. As you know, we hired Civic Plus as, or who helped us establish the websites. They have 20 years of experience exclusively on local government. That's all they do, is help local government build websites. The goal was to connect residents with elected officials and staff through the websites, make the websites user-friendly, provide helpful information to residents, and also keep them up to date about the services and projects of the county. All three websites have optimum responsive design experience for handheld devices. Just, this just means there's easy reading and navigation, no matter what device you're using, your iPhone, your iPad, your computer. Also, all three websites are ADA compliant. I'm going to ask Patrick Hamilton to come up for, and talk about the Pennies for Progress, and then Trent Ferris from the sheriff's office will follow them. I want to thank both of them. They were awesome to work with, and they worked really hard in pulling their respective websites together.
Thanks, Trish. Good evening. Here's a snapshot of a before and after picture of our old website versus our current website. The old website was kind of outdated, needed to be revamped, and this was good timing with Pennies 4 coming up and a lot of attention on the program. So, a few of the highlights, I mentioned Pennies 4 coming up in November. The current website has a lot of information about Pennies 4, starting with who were the commission members, how they were appointed. It does list all the projects on Pennies 4, the dollar amount associated with each project. There's also an interactive map specifically for Pennies 4, the public can go on the map. It's got all the Pennies 4 projects on there highlighted, they can click on each project, it'll pull up project name, beginning point, ending point, dollar amount, all the information they need for the referendum in November for questions they may have. Some of the updated stuff on there as well, we continuing to keep our interactive map for projects one, two, and for Pennies projects one, two, and three. Again, it's a GIS map, they can zoom in, click on the individual project, pulls up information about it, budget, status, that type of information. There's also a PDF of each program that the citizens can click on, they can click on the Pennies 3 PDF, and it pulls up all the projects that are on Pennies 3, current status, dollar amount, budget, all that good information. It does talk about the different phases of a project, which we've talked to you all about before, the planning, the planning phase, design, right-of-way construction kind of spells out all the, all the work that has to have in each. spells out all the, all the work that has to have in each, in each of those phases, kind of explaining why these projects take as long as they do. There's also, on this website again, is residents can submit a comment or a question on any, any specific road project. We tend to get those a couple a week, just asking different projects, updates on them, and we respond to those quickly. And frequently asked questions are also on there for the, you know, a novice person who may not know as much about Pennies and just wants to know kind of the, the, a bullet point information about the program. So overall, it's, it's much easier to navigate. The old, old website, you had to do three or four, five clicks to find the information you want. Now we're down to two or maybe three clicks to find what you're looking for, which is much easier for the end user. So that's all I have on the Pennies website. If you don't have any questions, I'll pass it on to Trent.
Thanks for having me. As you can see, it's a night and day difference. I can tell you that the old website here, this picture right here versus this picture, see the big difference? Deputy with kids. Deputy training for a felony traffic stop. So big difference, because the pictures on the old website, it took an arduous task to try to get one picture changed using the old company. I couldn't do that. New website, I could change that right now if I wanted to on my phone. Haven't done it yet, but I could. But, um, yeah, I mean, I really would like to show you, but we don't have that much time. Anyway, it's really a great website. I'm looking forward to using this app right here. Where's it? Notify Me. Right there. Notify Me is a, a service that we'll be able to get folks to use to sign up, to push email and text alerts to your phone and your email account, whatever you sign up for. You can have one or the other, or both. We hope to use that for, it's not going to be a change from the code red, which is the reverse 911 system, for when we have a need for the public safety communications to send out a reverse 911. Notify Me is just going to be simple things, like when we have a K-9 call out somewhere in Fort Mill, folks who sign up for the alerts in Fort Mill will get that, but the folks out in Bonner Horton Road won't get that same alert. And we've, we've split it up to, to the fire districts right now, but we've added a few more. If you live in a certain fire district, like the Leslie area, it's the Leslie-Katlaa area, you can sign up for alerts just for your area. And also, you can, we added a few, like Baxter Village in Fort Mill, because it's a big growing area. Tegi K, even though it's Tegi K City, folks live in that area, you can have that. And we added the Kataba Indian Nation as a, as an alert area. So we hope to use it for traffic alerts, whenever K-9's out, SWAT team has to go somewhere. And right at the top of the page, you'll not only get it in your email and text messages, right at the top of the page will be alert, something's going on in the county for your, if you signed up. And you have to sign in to log in. So I'm really looking forward to that portion of it. Now, the daily issue I have with the media is the inmate info. The new inmate site was, MIS actually designed the site, and we changed it up to where every day I'd get maybe one or two phone calls from our favorite reporters in the area asking about an inmate that was arrested. Not necessarily the sheriff's office arrested them, maybe Rock Hill PD, or Tegi K, or Fort Mill arrested them, but it wasn't up on the website for them to see. We've changed that to where you could see the arresting agency of that inmate. So that saves me a, a bunch of phone calls from the, I won't name names, but our favorite reporters of the area, asking where somebody was arrested, which agency arrested them. And it's also still going to be probably our number one most visited page on this website. Like Patrick said, it's one to two clicks to get whatever information you need. Before, we had an email address called, let me get it right here. This is our info. If you wanted information from the sheriff's office, this is what you had to email. Pretty confusing, right? Now, we're going to whittle that, we've whittled it down, and that email address in about a month is going to go away. And we've whittled it down to just sheriff.info@YorkCountyGov.com. And we have a new email form that the Civic Plus folks have come up with, where it's a form. If you want to talk to the sheriff, you can talk directly to the sheriff. You can talk to the captains, district lieutenants, me, anybody you want, all the way down to the K-9 and code enforcement officers. And just by clicking this form, and it goes straight to them. It's not going to this info email, then somebody in the command staff reading it, and then send it off to somebody. So the new email address system is going to be really great, and it will save us on spam. Spam and dangerous spam emails that come into the sheriff's office. This morning, I got an email from York County, Maine about a road closure. I have nothing to do with York County, Maine, but we still get the emails from them. So hopefully, the new email system will take care of that. We also use the Civic Send feature. I'm sure Trish can tell you about it, but it's like a newsletter that you would send out to whomever you'd like to via the same alert system using Notify Me. It's an email newsletter sent straight to the citizen. So I'm pretty pumped about it. It's going to be exciting. So far, we only have a few Notify Me people signed up, maybe 120 for the whole entire county. We actually do have folks out there, out in the Bullet Creek area, that have signed up for the alerts, five so far. So sometime this week or next, we're going to do a live Facebook video showing folks how to sign up for the Notify Me, so we can get that out there. Right now, I don't want to alert just 120 people. I want to alert the entire county if something should happen. Any questions?
Questions? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to either probably get with Trish or someone, because I'd like to get this on my District Three County Council page that I have on Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
And so I can get it out, and I do, got constant contact email now, so I can email out to people that are giving me their emails, to let them know how they can do that.
Yes, sir. Sign them up. I've been trying, well, we launched a couple weeks ago, been every week, hey, sign up for Notify Me. It's really simple. All you have to do is sign up for it, click on if you want just email or your phone, or both, and then you'll get an email to, hey, you've signed up for this. Click, text back Y for yes, or N for no. It's simple, that, that's simple. You'll get a text message, and I promise I won't fill up your inbox and your text message data rates or whatever for alerts. It'll be serious alerts. And then every quarterly, we hope to do a newsletter to the county, you know, citizens and everything about what's happening at the sheriff's office.
Any other questions for Trent?
Thank you.
Sir, appreciate it.
You didn't need to. All right, so this is the top part of the York County Maine website. So we should launch the Maine website on Thursday, September 21st. If you notice, one thing that we did with all three websites is we tried to get a consistent theme. Before, the sheriff's office had a gold color, ours was gray, and Pennies was light blue. So now, we all have dark blue. That way, it just kind of puts us all under one umbrella of the county, having the consistent theme. Like Trent said, I'm just going to kind of go over the basics. The alert notifications, we'll do the same thing. If it's weather, we'll, we'll put it at the top. We can push that out via text message or email to residents as well. So that's just another way to push out information to stay informed. What will happen is on the front page, residents will be able to sign up for different categories that are already listed, and they'll be notified. They can choose email, text, or both. So that gives us another avenue to push out information as maybe there's a Keep York County Beautiful event that they want to participate in, and they want to know about those events, then we can push that out if they sign up for that category. The Civic Send feature, that's where we can push out information as well if they sign up for a category. So if we want to push out our press releases, if somebody wants to see the press releases that the county pushes out, they can sign up for that, and we will send that out. Submit a request, this is something new that we will have on the website. It is, what we've done is just made a graphic button on the front page, where citizens can easily click on the submit a request, and we've listed some popular requests, such as a Freedom of Information Act, or if somebody needs some road maintenance, they'll, they'll be able to go to that page within one click, and then they'll see the listings, and they'll just do another click for whichever form that they want to fill out. So whether it's a FOIA form, or straight to the road maintenance form. Spotlight section, this is something new that'll be on our website. We have the ability to spotlight three projects, initiatives at one time, and this is just another quick way on the front page that residents can go and see large projects or initiatives that are going on in the county right now. Visible social media feeds, this is new for us as well. We have iFramed our social media, so Twitter and Facebook, they'll see that on the bottom of the front page. So they'll be able to follow us on social media as well, and they'll be able to see information we post on our social media feeds from the front page of our website. Easy-to-use fillable forms, this is something also new for staff. There's a lot of forms that we have made fillable, where a resident can just come on the website page, fill out the form right there, and hit submit. They don't have to print out a PDF, write on the PDF, scan it back in, or mail it. So there, there are items now that are fillable forms for residents to use. A calendar, this is listed on the front page. This lists the meetings and events, so that way residents can see, here's the meetings for this month for York County, and they can also see any events that we might be having as well, so they can stay up to date on events. We've also put a link on the front page for the York County, I think it's called York County Road Systems. We know that you all receive a lot of emails about the roads, and we get calls, who maintains my road? I have a pothole, what can I do? So this is just a special page that we've created for residents to go to. It gives them access to road maintenance division, the fillable form, the GIS map, where they can see who maintains the road. We've had this information, it's just been in the backend of the website. And so what we have done is move the important information that residents seem to call more about to the front of the website. So our goal really is, like Patrick mentioned before, it's minimum three clicks to get to the information. It's no more click, 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 click. GIS, which is a very popular page for our website, they have organized and streamlined their, their online mapping applications. They've done a great job, so they've just made it easier for residents to find the specific map that they're looking for. You will see more visual content than we have on our website now. A lot of staff have put slideshows, they've put videos, they've put great graphics and pictures on the website, so that's just another way that we have enhanced this website compared to the website that we have now. And last, you'll just know there's a lot of intricate details and graphics. Like I said, we've put lots more pictures on there. We have graphic images. We just have special details to where, on the front page with the graphic links, if a resident hovers over them, they bounce. So we've just put some really great, modern techniques on our webpage that we haven't had before. And also, at the top of the page, instead of clicking, we have what's called the hovering. So now, when anyone goes to our front, or the top of the front page, instead of having to click on departments, they'll just hover over departments, and the list drops down. And they can just hover from each label at the top to see where they want to get to. They don't have to click in and out. They can just hover and get to where they need to. So I think that residents will see it as a much easier, user-friendly website, and the information that they're looking for. Each department and division has really worked hard to put the information out there that they receive the calls mostly about. So at this point, if you guys have any questions about the Maine website, I'll be glad to answer those.
I've got one.
Yes.
I saw Christie making a note of what I think I was going to ask.
Well, and I got an email about it, too, so I hope I'm not putting you on the spot. But this is, first of all, this is great, and I know this was a huge undertaking. To me, this is the number one tool that our public needs in order to know what's going on in government, and we, this is, this is long overdue, and I think it sounds great, what we're implementing here. One of the main reasons, and it cost a, a good penny, so it sounds like it's going to be user-friendly, and that it's going to have, you know, tools for the folks to be able to find the information. One of the main reasons that I supported the, the cost of this was because I understood the vendor could make sure that folks, I routinely get questions from the community about not getting notices of, of planning commission meetings, or ZBA meetings, or rezoning issues. What I, what I understood when we first started out was that, and this wasn't your, this wasn't county staff issue, this was the vendor issue, that what they promised before, being able to sign up for an issue that was coming before any of those bodies in particular, that we could do that within a geographical radius. And I understood going, as we got into this, that they couldn't do that. But what they can do is limit it to a district, so that someone living in District Five can get notices of anything. And so what I'm curious to know is, did that actually make the cut? Are they going to be able to sign up for that, so that, for instance, I live here, and I can know what rezonings, I can know what planning commission issues, I can know what ZBA issues are coming up within a particular geographic area. I just want to make sure that that's a feature on this. Do you know yet, is that something we got to?
Well, I think it, I think it'd be great if we could have an offline conversation with you. There's other factors that have come into that, that we just need to go over with you, because we know what you're asking, and we just want to make sure that we can get there the, the best route. So if, if you want to talk after this meeting, or we can contact you, that's no problem. There's just been some other factors that have come into, some other knowledge that came to Joel and I, as we were working on this. So if we can just have a conversation afterwards, because he's in the back, we can touch base with you about that.
Happy to do that. And maybe one, one thing I would suggest is that we put this, I, I understand it's going to roll out in September?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe put it on the agenda for a month or two, or whatever is appropriate timeframe, so that we can give feedback back to you guys of what we're hearing from the public on the website in general, what improvements, you know, if any, that we, you know, any tweaks.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Christie pretty much covered that. My, my only question was, I know you might not be able to do, you know, when we notify a rezoning, we notify a certain radius. Well, that's probably about impossible to do. But if we could notify, if it's a rezoning in District Three, maybe let District Three residents know, if they sign up for it.
Right, sure, yes, sir.
Or like the sheriff's office is doing by fire department district, or something like that, to narrow it down a little bit, but let people sign up if they want to know if a rezoning, or, you know, any type of thing like that in their area they can sign up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, add on to that. To Trish's point, we want to, there's some notification requirements that we're concerned about, specific to what's legally required for notifications for rezonings and things of that nature. So this, this Friday, we have a zoning committee meeting, and that's going to be an agenda item, and we're looking at how we can better inform the public on the front end on many of these public hearings. The point of this was to show, we're going to roll this out on September 21st, and work out those bugs, and not let this particular issue, when it came to planning and zoning issues, slow the whole process down. So to your point, Ms. Cox, yes, ma'am, that is, our intent is to get an opportunity to do a notify me type blast. However, we need to make sure that there's, all the i's are dotted, a t's are crossed when it comes to notification requirements being met.
Thank you, Trish. Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. One other thing, I think the spotlight sections, I think that's going to be real important, because, you know, there's three issues that'll be up there, and, you know, we'll be able to, well, let's talk about our buildings. You'll be able to go into the spotlight on the buildings, and you'll be able to look, you know, there'll be pictures, there'll be numbers, this is where we're at, this is where we started, this is how much we spent, this is, we're on schedule. So there's going to be a lot of information in those blocks that we've never been able to get out before, so it's a good thing.
Thanks, Trish.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, consider first reading case number 1723, rezoned AGC to RUD 1 at 424 Daves Road in New York Community.
We have to approve first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, consider first reading case number 1728, rezoned from AGC to RUD 1 at Atkins Road in New York Community.
I would make the motion to approve, because it's a first reading, but there are some questions that I have that I don't need to ask tonight, but I'll ask between now and the next, next time this comes up.
Second.
Discussion. Question on, yep.
I just got concerns with the planning, planning staff that recommended denial, and planning commission recommending approval. I got the same question today, I'd like to see, but I don't have a prominent going for either. And I'll third that comment, so.
Okay. Question on the motion, I'm sorry.
Normally, when we see a rezoning, you get these numbered bullet points, and one of the things it tells us is, was this consistent with the comprehensive land use plan? There is nothing under this summary that tells me if it's consistent or not consistent. I just ask that, it's by second reading that literally just tell me that, because that's a, one of the major factors that I use every time I look at one of these. One of the major factors that I use every time I look at one of these.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Next item is council member... I don't think there's any committee reports. Council member, new non-agenda comments. Any council member have anything to discuss?
I have one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Winkler.
I mentioned earlier that I have started an email to constituents in the district, so I'd just like to put it out there. If you would like to be added, you can email me at robert.winkler@YorkCountyGov.com, and I'll add you to it. Or an easier one to remember, my middle initial is W. You can email me at robertwinkler@gmail, which is my personal one, and just say, "Add me to the newsletter list." I don't want to start sending and receiving emails through personal, because of all, but that's easier to remember for you just to give me added, you know, to add you to the list. You can also, if you would like, I hesitate to put this one out there, text me your email address at 803-230-7836. Do not call me, because I may be driving and can't write it down, so...
Any other...
230 what?
7836.
Sounds like Kerwood.
Okay, let's see. Do we have a motion on executive session?
Yes, sir. I move we go into executive session to receive an economic bill update, as well as discuss a contractual matter involving the White Street property.
Need a second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. We'll be back at 7:45. Yes, sir.
Citizens' concerns.
Oh, there was nobody signed up? I mean, you'd let me know, right? That's when you have them listed. No? Well, that's... Yeah, we can change the... Okay, thank you. Oh, it's public forum, then. Okay. Okay, we're good.